First item of business, and we do have a quorum of council present. First item of business will be the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation. So please remain standing after the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please remain standing. So please join me in prayer. Lord, we invite you into our meeting, Lord. We ask that the decisions made here will be to the benefit, will benefit our citizens, Lord. We pray a special prayer for former Councilman Joe Branham. Lord, he's going through some health struggles right now. We pray for him. We pray for your healing hand. Lord, we also pray for Leslie Willis. Lord, she had an accident last week, and she also needs your healing hand as well, Lord. We do pray for Akoni. We pray that you continue to bless it and all things, and, Lord, please guide us in this meeting tonight. In the name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. So item 3A is the approval of minutes for the June 2nd, 2025 council workshop. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the June 2nd, 2025 council workshop minutes.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor, raise your right hand to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, all in favor. Next is item 3B, which is the June 9th, 2025 county council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion we approve June 9th, 2025 county council meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion? Call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand to say aye.
Aye.
All right, that was also all in favor. Brings us to citizens comments. We have one person signed up to speak, Mr. John Massey. I will ask you to come forward, and if you'll state your name and your address, and once you do that, you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
I'm John Massey, 171 East Lacy in Chester. I'm here once again to briefly discuss the restoration and perpetual maintenance of Mount Hebron African-American Cemetery. Was established mid the late 1800s. It's located off the 72 bypass, First Street Eureka, meaning about five miles or less from here. Should anyone ask about discussed any of what follows with the city and county council cemetery committees? Yes. County only cemetery. The city at present has no committee. It lists five open seats via the city website. That being said, I will be asking, am asking, the county cemetery to take the lead with city assistance, input of course. Openings on county cemetery could be city or county residents, preferably African-American with interest in the work. Should we no longer have respect for the deceased, care about the preservation of history, reason being the graves, the cemetery are located 100 yards or so west on city property and not here, 100 or so yards east on county? The research and documentation available at the county library, on file at Clerk's Office, County Courthouse, for all to see, prove September 2006, city was annexed into the city limits, done so with the request of previous caretakers, believed deceased. For century more, however, before annexation, this was county land, last burial Mount Hebron Awareness equals caring. Hebron needs community, city, county, state awareness and support. Cemetery needs caring people caring. Full cemetery access, once known as the one-way in road, refer to the handout, that short section only will need to be cleared before cleanup and restoration work can begin. I ask that this short distance road clearing project be added to the county council's July agenda, voted on for approval. Funding, as it was with Burnt Meeting House Cemetery in the past, a Mount Hebron Cemetery Fund will be needed. The Hebron Fund, set up where both real world and online donations can begin, I ask that this as well be added to the county council's July agenda and voted on for approval.
Mr. Massey, time's up. If you want to wrap up your thought there.
Okay, closing.
Yes, sir.
Mount Hebron African-American Cemetery, African-American history will need Chester City and County to step up by working together, by doing the right thing. Mount Hebron Cemetery can and will be saved. All I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mas. All right, so next item is the public hearing, number 5, 5A. That is ordinance 2025-12, authorizing pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement by and between Chester County, South Carolina, and Chester PV1 LLC, acting for itself, one or more current or future affiliates and other project companies, collectively the company, providing for a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes incentives, modifying a joint county industrial and business park of Chester and York Counties so as to enlarge the park, the provision of special source revenue credits and other related matters. So that's our public hearing, and we don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to that? If not, I will state that this public hearing is closed. So that brings us to item 6A, which is the third reading of ordinance 2025-12, which is authorizing, is going to be the same as I just read. I'll read it again. Authorizing pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement by and between Chester County, South Carolina, and Chester PV1 LLC, acting for itself, one or more current or future affiliates and other project companies, providing for a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes incentives, modifying a joint county industrial and business park of Chester, New York Counties so as to enlarge the park, provision of special source revenue credits and other related matters. Is there a motion on the table?
Make a motion we approve the third reading of ordinance 2025-12.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve in a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Hester. For the sake of argument, it's Chester, New York County. Why would it not pay Chester, New York County, Lancaster? Typically, that's...
I think our multi-county industrial park is with York. Where's Michael? Michael, can you answer that? Well, I'm not, I don't know that I'd have the best answer for you, Mr. Agee.
I just was curious. We've done it with all three of them before, so...
The part that most of, remember, let me start by saying, multi-county industrial park is a legal designation, it's not necessarily a physical place. The property that has been designated as being part of the multi-county industrial park for at least the last probably 10 or 15 years has been between Chester and York. At one point, the county had a number of parks, including, I believe, one with Lancaster. I couldn't tell you the last time that property was designated as being part of that park. That is ultimately a policy decision for council, and council can certainly designate another partner county so long as it is a contiguous county or counties. I am not familiar that Chester has ever had a tri- or quad-county park. There are some in the state, so I don't know that I've ever seen a park involving Chester, York, and Lancaster, but at some point, yes, I have seen Chester and Lancaster in a park agreement. But again, it's been probably a decade or so.
Soon. Soon.
Soon. Again, that's up to council. We can designate, unless a company specifically requests it, it really doesn't matter from the economic...
It's not a mission. I'm not...
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that...
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kozart.
Of course. All right, is there any more discussion? Call for the question. Those in favor of this third reading, ordinance 2025-12, raise your right hand to say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. Next up is 6B, which is the first reading, ordinance 2025-13, entitled only. Approving the execution and delivery of a project agreement between the county and Project Eureka Mills and providing for other related matters. Mr. Hester, would you speak to that before a motion's made?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. This is a project agreement confirming the developer's intention to develop certain parcels, including the old mill site and those adjacent to it, for multifamily residential, a small solar project that will power, when we say a small solar project, is a project that will power that residential facility, and a refurbishment of one of the old community softball fields with cleanup and grading to assist. A portion of one or more of the parcels may remain undeveloped because of some environmental concerns in those areas, and in exchange for this project, due to its size, the nature of it being attainable housing, its location, the really unique use of brownfield land, and the cleanup that has taken place on that landfill, or that brownfield land, the county would waive the developmental fee for the purposes of this multifamily residential units. Rezoning of this project has already been accomplished by council, and third reading was on May 5th, 2025.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to be made?
Are they going to tear their old power plant down?
The stack that's still there? Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion we approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-13.
I'll second. I'll second.
I think Mr. Agee, Mr. Agee beat you to it.
Okay.
But thank you, thank you. All right, so...
Will you put your microphone down just a hair? There you go.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance entitled only. Is there any discussion? Seems like a good project, one that's going to clean up an area that needs work, so it's exciting.
Very good project.
I'll call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand to say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor. Next, we have item 6C, which is Resolution 2025-13, identifying the capital projects as part of a program of general obligation borrowing for calendar year 2025, updating the list of capital projects related to prior general obligation borrowings for calendar years 2022 through 2024, and allocating amounts from the capital project funds and providing for other related matters. Before we take a motion on that, if we could ask Mr. Darby, our treasurer, to come forth.
Good evening. So you should have a copy of Resolution 2025-13 in front of you. If you look at Exhibit B, you'll see a list that looks similar. It's the list of projects that we presented in our budget workshop in April. That list has not changed since that workshop.
So, Mr. Darby, I think we have it in our iPads, in our packet, but we don't have actual paper copy.
Okay, all right, so it should be, if it's in your iPad, it should be Exhibit B of And so if you look at that exhibit, you'll see a total project fund of $2,244,302.80. And so this resolution authorizes the county to borrow funds to complete and cover the cost of those projects, and it also authorizes what we call bond cleanup. And so we have about $244,302.80 from prior bonds, projects that have been completed, and there's some residual funds left over from the completion of those projects. So we will roll those funds forward into this fund to offset the cost, and then also we're asking council to approve the use of $200,000 from our capital reserve fund to also offset the cost of that 2.2 million. And so what that leaves you is about $1.8 million in projects that we need to borrow funds for, plus the cost of issuance. This project or this program is something that we started back in 2016, and so time flies when you're having funds. I can't believe it's been almost 10 years, I guess, since we started this, but the county has been doing this for a while. We've got a level millage that funds, debt service millage that funds these projects, and so that would hold true this year by using those other sources of funds. Any questions on those?
I don't have any questions with this, but is this all going to be part of what you, what we've been talking about with the next truck gone, or is that a separate issue?
No, sir. The fire truck plan, how we determine to pay for that is a totally separate issue. And to follow that up, not saying, Mr. Agee, that in the future, a portion of this general obligation bond, in future years, couldn't be allocated to that.
Yeah. What we were talking about is the ladder truck and the pumper for Rich Park, so...
Yes, sir. This year, it's not a part of this. That's correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think if you look at that list, a significant portion of the projects that we have funded are, you know, this is how we fund our police, our sheriff's vehicles, our ambulances, our fire equipment, and so that's a good portion of this list if you
Any questions for me on any of the items?
Sure, I have one. I have two, actually. ADA compliance project, Public Works.
Can you, I can't hear you, sir. I'm sorry.
The ADA compliance project for Public Works.
Yes, sir. So, good question. So we have an agreement with the COG where we have to bring all of our facilities into ADA compliance, and we have a timeframe to do that in, but we also have to, there has to be a plan in place that allows us to qualify for specific grants and other monies that we can receive through the COG or through federal agencies. And so if you notice, the past couple of years, Mr. Darby, I'd say the past three years, we've had an allocation in our, in this bond that goes toward that project, as well as we've had some other monies allocated, and so we're steadily trying to make sure that all county facilities are ADA compliant, and quite honestly, that's been a pretty big undertaking, given that most of them, the age of some of our facilities, like our courthouse and so forth, and so when you take on those projects, radiate compliance, they're not always extremely cheap. We've been able to supplement with this $25,000.
I did have one other question, if I can go back. Fire coordinator's got nine sets of turnout gear for additional staff, and in the budget, when I went through the budget line item by line item in the last week, and there are nine people we're going to hire, where's the additional staff that's going to have to be there, relief people? I mean, somewhere along the line, if Billy Bob takes a day off, where is that money coming from in the budget, and are those sets of turnout gear and all that, it's not in the budget that we voted on? So I would assume...
Right. So, a really good question, and if you remember, and maybe not all the council is aware of this, but in, since before I came, county fire also has what we call our full-time, part-time staffing, that we were allocated five personnel in a separate budget line item, and those personnel serve as relief staff as well. So not only do they get sent out maybe to North Chester or to some of the smaller areas, Leeds, crossroads, different areas, sometimes they go to Fort Lawn, Lando, prior to this, but so those staff are used kind of intermittently throughout the county, and so that staff is what currently aids in that backfield and utility type positions.
So your backfield, Great Falls?
Yes, sir.
And your backfield, Rossville?
Rossville's not fully staffed. We use, we, I guess what you're getting at is, do we take those part-timers and put them in Rossville? Sometimes, yes, sir. Did I answer your question? Okay.
I just want to make sure, because it's not in the budget for any additional money for backfield.
Right. Right.
All right, there's no more questions at the moment from Mr. Hester. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve Resolution 2025-13.
Second.
All right, so is there any more discussion? Any more questions? No, no, call for the vote. Those in favor, raise your right hand to say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor. All right, that brings us to item 6D, which is Resolution 2025-14, providing for changes to the county employee personnel handbook relating to a new tuition reimbursement policy and providing for other related matters. Again, Mr. Hester, want to speak to that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a new policy being added to the Chester County Personnel Manual, and as approved in the budget this year, we allotted $8,000 for tuition reimbursement. Just a kind of a highlight of how that policy reads is that you have to been, you must be a full-time employee at least 12 months with the county. It must be somewhat job-related, I guess is the best way to put it, and I use the analogy, we won't pay tuition reimbursement for an astronomy degree, but we would for business degrees and the like. So it has to be an approved type, of course. They must be taken at an accredited institution, and it'll be reimbursed at state rate once the class is completed. Receipts have been provided, as well as a financial, a tuition statement has been filled out by the employee and approved. So they'll be approved at state rate. Once the money that's been allocated for this year is used up, it's on a first-come, first-served basis for employees, and once it's used up this year, then the program will be finished for the year, and again, hopefully, the program's successful, and we would refund it, we would fund it again next year. They get 100% reimbursement per credit hour for a grade of an A, 75% for a B, and a 50% for a C, and if an employee leaves 24, within 24 months voluntarily after receiving tuition reimbursement, they would have to repay that tuition reimbursement they received at a prorated rate.
That's for any particular, if they go to York Tech, they go to USCL, they go wherever?
Yes, sir, and that's a good question. So we reimburse it state rate, and the way state rate works is there's an out-of-county tuition rate that's $199 a credit hour, and in-county at 149 per credit hour, and then there's an out-of-state. We will not reimburse it the out-of-state rate, we only reimburse it the in-state rates, which is 199 would be the max per credit hour that they would receive.
I'm not advocating this, but we have an employee that has a son that's accepted into five medical schools, and he just chose Medical University in Charleston to go, and you know, that's a long-term employ for this county. We need to make sure that we do everything we can to help him. There's a couple of foundations in Chester County that are supporting him. So anybody's got spare money, he could really use it, because his mom and daddy work hard.
Thank you, Mr. Agee.
So a little bit of clarification there. So if someone did go to an out-of-state institution, they could be reimbursed at the 199 rate?
That's correct.
It's allowed, it's just not more than the 199.
That's correct. I mean, we welcome that. If you wanted to say attend University of Oklahoma online, and they followed the documentation process, provided all the information, yes, we would reimburse that at the 199.
All right. Floor is open for a motion.
Make a motion we approve Resolution 2025-14.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Those in favor, raise your right hand to say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor. So that brings us to the administrator's report. Mr. Hester, again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I know I say it's going to be brief all the time, but it will tonight. First, I'd like to introduce our newest employee. We have hired our communications officer. This is the first communications officer Chester County has ever had, so I'd like Ms. Morgan McDougall to please, Ms. Morgan Shirley, I'm sorry, please stand up. It says Morgan McDougall Shirley, so... So Morgan's a lifelong Chester native. Morgan currently resides in Blackstock with her husband Ross Shirley and her two daughters, Avery and Amelia. Morgan comes to us with over 10 years in marketing industry, having focused on retail and customer relations, and narrowing her focus to the overall revitalization of downtown Chester County in the last five years. In her spare time, you can find her at the softball fields at Rodman cheering on her girls, and so we welcome her, and please take time to meet Morgan, and we've got lots of big plans. We kick off a phone call tomorrow to, with someone who's going to help us kind of get our communications plan up and running as well, so welcome her. Next, thank you, Morgan, and I know, Mr. Wilson, in your prayer, you mentioned Mr. Branham, and so I just, I had him in my administrator's report. I stopped by to see him today. He said to make sure that I told all the council hello, and he misses you all, and all of you in the audience that are, have always been faithful as well, and Mr. Branham is dealing with some health issues, but he looked good. We sat and had a lot of conversation. He's ready to get back on the stump grinder, he told me, that they need him, and so, and he looked like he could go out there and operate it today, you know? He looked good, but he is, he asked to make sure that we include him in our prayers, and so just be thinking about him and his family. And then, Mr. Killian, I have a report for you. Ward road is done, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate everything you do.
Yes, sir, thank you. And that concludes my administrator's report.
All right, thank you. So we don't have any old business today, and new business, item 9A, we have the gateway to Chester County, the Visitor and Veterans History Center. We have a presentation of Mr. Britt Studemire.
Mr. Wilson, council, it's nice to be back. Very excited about this project, Gateway to Chester County Veterans History Center. The way this came about, Mr. Hester and I had a lot of conversations, and we wanted to do something very meaningful in this space. We initially had the visitors' part, but I'll explain that in a minute, but the gateway, that is the gateway to Chester County Veterans History Center. So let me tell you just a little bit about that project first. The project aims to transform that space at the gateway into a veterans' and battlefield's discovery hub, serving as an immersive and engaging entry point to Chester County's rich military heritage rather than a conventional welcome center. Visitors will engage with an innovative multimedia environment featuring artifacts, recording, storytelling. The experience concludes with a customizable printed or texted itineraries that guide travelers to key historical and local commerce sites across the county. Our hope here is that the center honors over 2,100 local veterans and commemorates historic battles such as Fish Dam Ford and Fishing Creek, and transforms personal and regional military history into a countywide educational and patriotic journey. Yeah, it's on. There we go. This project is going to have an economic impact. This is a very conservative estimate, but if we captured just 0.05% of the 20 million annual vehicles passing by the gateway each year, the center could attract over... annual vehicles passing by the gateway each year, the center could attract over 10,000 visitors per year, injecting an estimated $390,000 into the local economy, and supporting multiple hospitality jobs while also generating approximately 31,000 in tax revenue. I think those numbers can be higher, but we took a very conservative approach. In my discussion with Mr. Hester and in our talks about how to make this a first-class facility, we decided to engage a professional company to help us design this center, and we've contracted with HW Designs from Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, who I'm going to show you some of their work here in a second, a firm with a strong track record in immersive and interpretive environments to bring the Veterans History Center vision to life. This is some of the work that they've done. They did the Camden Revolutionary Museum. And with HW Designs, this week on Thursday at the Gateway from 10 to 2, we're going to have a design workshop to get input on what we'd like to see in the center. Here's another piece of the work from Camden. I also wanted to let you guys know that people that'll be there will be representatives from the county, the Chamber of Comrades, South Carolina 250 Committee, the American Legion, the DAV, and more. We're going to have a lot of insight and a lot of people there that have a vested interest in this project that means something to them, given their input on what they want to see in our center. Here's an example. This, this is a static display. We want to be more dynamic, but I wanted to show you the quality of work, and then I'm going to show you kind of what we're thinking. But this is from the Camden Revolutionary War Visitor Center. Here's a shot from the, a picture from the Sawnee Mountain Preserve. It's a little hard to see in the picture, but you can see just, just how delicate and intricate their work is. And we shared this, I know David, David likes seeing this picture, but we want to use cutting-edge technology, and this was from the Anderson Museum, where they have a holographic display. So this is a soldier from his era, who you push a button and he tells his story and can share his story to you directly. A very dynamic technology that can be changed out from time to time to tell different veterans' In order to pay for this, in my talks with, with the South Carolina Parks and Rec and Tourism, they let me know that the Undiscovered Grant Program would support this project. The purpose of the grant is to support underutilized tourism assets in South Carolina by funding, funding publicly-owned tourism attraction projects that increase visitation and visitor spending. This is a reimbursement-based program, and grantees must fund the project upfront and will be reimbursed up to 50%. Awards range from 50 to 200,000. We are proposing a $200,000 project based on the estimations given to us by HW Designs with a matching fund contribution of $100,000. Projects must attract visitors from outside of 50-mile radius and can include new attractions, enhancements, or adaptive reuse of tourism-related structures. Part of the requirement is a 20-year commitment, so the grantees must retain ownership and operation of this site for 20 years and may not transfer that without their approval. The pre-application for this grant was due last week. I submitted that and it was approved almost on the spot. The full application is due August 8th. The project must begin within six months after the grant is approved, and it must be completed within a 20-month, 24-month timeframe. This is from South Carolina PRT directly. They are very excited about this project and what we're, what we're trying to do here. And they told me that this is a strong, well-conceived project with impressive planning already in place, and they expect our application to be very competitive. And that concludes the presentation on both the Veterans History Center and, and the South Carolina Undiscovered Grant.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Hester.
So if we can move to B, Mr. Chairman, I'll explain the financials around what Mr. Studamire just presented.
Yeah, let's do that. So item 9B is the South Carolina Parks Recreation and Tourism's Undiscovered SE Grant Match Approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm sure everybody's question is, okay, well, it's a grant match, and this is a $200,000 project. Let me first kind of back up and say one thing. HW Designs would perform the work here. So this is not a project that would be on our county staff to perform. So this project would be totally through HW Designs. Currently, our local ATAX fund holds a balance of $587,000 in our fund. The fiscal year 2025 budget, we allocated $41,253 from that fund that were going to be applied initially when we were going to kind of, this project had started as a visitor's center. It's since, as we worked with the DAV and the Veterans Group that has taken on the project at the Memorial Building in downtown Chester, and then we sort of expanded this project with their vision. And we, we thought it was a great vision, great use of, of this site, because how many times have we talked about, how do we get people to know all the battlefields and all the historic places throughout Chester, as well as more information about our veterans and the limited space we have? But, so we have 41,253 that's already been allocated to the project. And so what we're asking for is to use, out of that balance of 587,000 in that fund, use $58,747 to supplement to, if we're approved for the grant, to have 100,000 in matching funds for this project. And then HW Designs also expects all costs associated with this grant, or with this project to be grant-eligible. Therefore, all of the money would be, able to be matched.
Can I ask a question real quick? What's the timeline on it? Once it's approved, like, how long is the process completed?
So the design process will be about six months. So we look at finishing that up at the beginning of the year. The timetable for construction is to start in January at this point, and we want to get it finished by the end of next year so that we can open it during the South Carolina 250 year.
That's my, that's where I was going with that.
Your South Carolina 250 committee members have made that point.
I just wanted to make sure, just see what the timeline was.
That, that's, that's our timeline.
That would be really, that would be really good. Okay.
And you said there's going to be a meeting Thursday at 10 to 2 at the Gateway?
Yes, sir, from 10 to 2, so people can, different representatives from those organizations can make their input. Yes, sir.
So with the 20-year commitment for this, for this undiscovered South Carolina grant, I see it says it needs to retain ownership and operation. How much flexibility will we have for the next 20 years as far as going to be moved from one location to another? Can the hours change? All, all those types of things, the logistics of that?
From reading in their policy and what I stated there, I can look at it right here. Give me two seconds.
And, and to your point on the hours, Mr. Chairman, there's not a, there wasn't any specificity on the hours that we had to have that open. Obviously, we have a vision of how that would be ran, and obviously, our gateway manager would be a part of that from a standpoint of managing a staff member who would then manage potentially local volunteers from the DAV and from some of those groups. So there'd be a staff member associated with it.
So what do you have in mind as far as operational hours? Are you thinking this is a?
So really, that's part of kind of the community input session, what our veterans think, and that would be based on some, you know, information from other areas like the Camden Center as to when people mostly, you know, visited those sites, whether it be, you know, three days a week and on Saturday, or would it be, you know, partial hours? So that has not been determined at this point.
If they come to church on Sunday at a little church in Richburg, they don't have to go look at it because we get it every Sunday about the Revolutionary War, I promise.
Mr. Wilson, that was a good question. I wanted to make sure I stated that correctly. In my presentation, the state said that the project may, that you may not transfer project obligations without written South Carolina PRT approval. So I do think there's some leeway. I don't know the specifics on that, but I can find out for you.
We certainly want to, you know, not, not have to be any more locked in to the details than we have to be. Because 20 years is a long time. Things could change, but I could see, I could see it being moved or, or expanded or just changed.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, there was leeway there. I just, I don't want to speculate on it.
Right, right, right. That sounds good. Is there any more discussion? So we're looking for a motion to, to approve that, that amount for the grant match?
To approve the extra use of funds up to, and we can just, it can just be up to $100,000.
Okay, up to 100,000. All right, so the floor is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the grant approval up to $100,000 for the undiscovered South Carolina grant.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. Is there any discussion? Call for the question. Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you. And I'll get that, I'll get that to you.
Okay, perfect. All right, so next we have item 9C, which is the Information Technology Department Update. So ask our IT Director, David Shulke, to come forth.
Hey, good evening, council and members of, or, sorry, I already screwed up. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of council. I'm IT Director, David Shulke. Today, I'll talk about some of the analytics related to the IT department, along with some finished and ongoing projects. Our IT department is comprised of me, the IT Director, and a network administrator. We average about seven to eight tickets a day. We're always seeking ways to improve efficiency, and right now, we're about at a four-hour dwell time, meaning, you know, it takes us roughly four hours to finish tickets. Moving on, here's a few of the groups that we're a part of. I've been part of this group since 2020, the South Carolina SC Kick, and the network administrators now join that group, and we attend the monthly webinars. It's mainly focused around cybersecurity. Then a new group that I'm a part of, that I just got a committee member on, is the State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program. This is a real good networking resource, and I'm real, real happy to be a committee member on that. So here are a few ongoing projects that we have going on. The first one is the website development that I think Mr. Hester gave an update on a while back, and now we are at about 70% completed. You know, it's coming along. We're just really trying to focus on the content now and making sure all the information is available to the public. The second one is the Toshiba printer deployment. We just completed day two today, and we expect that to be done in the next few weeks. Next ongoing project is reviewing our contracts. We continue to do that. We just got through year round, year one budget year of the new Truvista contract, and we did see the $80,000 in savings that we had anticipated. So that was, that was a good note. And then here is a little, I guess, teaser on the homepage. Britt ended up making the homepage, so that's pretty nice. And then here's a couple of finished projects. The county council upgrade, I think we knew the project was completed, but not many people know what we actually did. So we upgraded really the, the board to be more of a digital board. Everything's in a touch panel over here, or I can get to it from a computer. And we upgraded the TVs to a brighter OLED TVs, and then all of council's monitors are, have been upgraded as well, so it's a little bit more visual appealing than the previous ones. And then the camera was upgraded as well, so that, you know, the viewers on Facebook have a little better experience as well. And then another completed project was the Pay Corps rollout. We have been about a year using Pay Corps now. The biggest benefit we've seen is the recruiting module. Feel like that's really brought in some talent into the county from the exposure that it's given, given us. Finally, the rollout of SAM SAR, the fleet management, was a success, and that's completed, and we're gaining analytics from that. That completes my department update. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
So if I can make a comment, Mr. Shulke is being extremely humble. There's only two of them in his department, which he stated, but if you do the math on the hours, he said they work about 32 hours a day, but they do work hard. They take care of all of the county, computer systems, and they're called on quite a bit. Not to mention all the phishing scams and all the malware and all the different things that people try to infiltrate with. I would say that we have one of the best cybersecurity systems in the state, and David's constantly working with SLED and updating that, but just him and, him and Corbin do a fantastic job. We're thankful to have them. David's always looking at contracts to save money. Two years in a row, he's brought renegotiated contracts that saved the, the county substantial amount of money. So their team really doesn't get recognized too much. They're always in the background working, but I'm telling you, without them, we would all be floundering around in the water.
Yeah, two comments I'll make. One is we're all excited about the new website. That's going to be, it's going to be great. The second one is the county council chamber upgrades with the monitors and everything, and, and folks viewing at home just can't really understate how important that is. People have the opportunity to log in and check on their elected leaders, and I know a lot of people watch it and enjoy it, and they stay informed because of it. So just, all in all, keep up the good work. We appreciate you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Comments?
Nope, just thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, appreciate the update.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so number 10 is boards and commissions. We don't have any for tonight, so that brings us to executive session. Number 11, executive session. A is discussion of matters relating to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body. P 2485. B is legal advice concerning municipality annexation. And C is the discussion of appointment of a person to a public body capital project sales tax commission. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion. Go into executive session.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in executive session.